... here. Are you keeping it heated all year round?
Heck yeah. What's an indoor pool?
Oh, okay.
It's meant to be swimming every day.
Swimming.
Swim dance.
So if I may interrupt.
I go swimming every day.
We will call the meeting to order at 6:05. We call the special meeting Wednesdays at 10:00 to 12:00 to order. Approval of minutes, did we get the minutes from last?
Who's recording today?
Today it was Ms. Harden, so tonight it would be Hoffmeyer.
This is the minutes.
Got it. Thank you.
Wait a minute, is that it?
Yeah.
Yes, and there are... Obviously, there's not copies for everybody.
Quick pause where I make some copies.
I'll be okay, since I won't vote since I wasn't here.
Copy.
Okay.
Commissioner, President tonight's meeting, Commissioner Singleton, Commissioner Holly, Commissioner Harden, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, and Commissioner Merrill. The first agenda item is approval minutes from the special meeting of 6 September 2018. Commissioner Singleton has recused herself from this as she wasn't here for the special meeting. Thank you, ma'am. And we're waiting for Commissioner Hoffmeyer to make copies. So as they stated, the first agenda item is the approval minutes for a special meeting on 6 September 2018 is their motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes be approved as written.
Do I have a second? Discussion. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good job.
Here's a copy of the minutes for the bank. Thank you. Next is Resolution 105 and 10... Excuse me, 18-05 and 18-06. These were both the resolutions we passed last week for the auditing officers. Do not believe we need a motion as we are just signing.
I think that's correct.
What's that?
That's correct. That's as far as I know.
While we're signing those, to go down to county, and a copy to the bank, of course. We'll give you a quick update on the opening of the pool. I'll start off. Update on the opening of the pool, I have talked to the city, and the mayor's office is working towards securing their donation of $30,000. We should have that hopefully this week. Are there any other updates? Yes, ma'am?
I know that the Rotary discussed this morning, and my understanding is what they are currently discussing is when the timing... You know, they had questions for me this morning, and questions about what... They're trying to determine, they want to make a donation in the best interest of their investment as well as the community, which is completely understandable. And so I think what they're trying to do, I haven't heard back from this morning's meeting, but they're trying to determine whether the timing would be immediately or after levy passage. And so we just had a discussion about what, you know, what that means, and then also kind of what our cash position was. And so, just, they're still very much in the game. I think it's just a matter of they're trying to figure out what's best, the best investment for them to make. The other thing is, I did an updated cash flow with kind of that, you know, that, you know, fewer line, consolidated, rather, budget on it. And I did, I sent a copy to Chairman Merrill, but I'll send a copy of it to everybody. And it's just, it's just updated based on what we discussed last time, and then I kind of filled some of it in based on what it looked like we needed to kind of keep things at a certain level. So it isn't necessarily like, I'll explain it when I send it, but I'll send it to everybody so that they have a more current copy of it.
Go ahead.
I forgot, I did not hear who you said you talked to.
The Rotary.
The Rotary.
Yes, yeah, no, that's great.
I also talked to Julie Lees from the foundation, and they're still on track to match the Rotary. That being said, I will be gone next week on a business trip. However, I am available by phone in the evenings if we need to have a special meeting or emergency meeting about opening the pool. So...
Does it matter if we spelled the word resolved incorrectly? Oh, God, no, I missed it. Okay. I mean, I don't know what resloved actually means, but, sorry to take us off task, but... Do we need to fix it, or does it matter?
I don't think it matters on a resolution, and since I did it, I'll print it and put my initials over it.
Okay, okay. Because what if you hadn't seen it? Sorry, I'm the third grader in the room, I'll admit it.
No, it's good.
Thank you.
So if something happens next week and changes, I will have access to my email. I will check that, and I will send out a notification to the vice chair that if we need to have a special meeting ready to hold in everybody, and that I'll phone in if need be. So...
Second one doesn't happen.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, or concerns on update with the opening of the pool?
Where's the school district at on all this, with the freshman team, et cetera?
We've kept the superintendent informed of where we're at, and unfortunately, they are pretty much at go-no-go time. So hopefully, we can resolve and move ahead sooner rather than later, but we can't, we did all agree that we needed to make sure that we were in a secure place before we moved ahead, so they'll have to make their own decision for their own program soon. That being said, we can conduct the public meeting part of the interview. Placed in front of you are the questions I had. I got questions back from one person, and so these are the six I came up with. We'll give each candidate 30 minutes. The first candidate will be here at 6:30 PM, and then we'll have 15 minutes between each candidate to discuss amongst us. And I will read this for the minutes. According to RCW 42-30-140, "Discussion by a governing body of salary, wages, and other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. However, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of an employee, we may go into executive session," as stated in Par Rev G. So we'll go on to executive session at 18:30. Excuse me, I'm sorry, 6:30 PM. And we will stay in executive session until 8:45 PM to interview each candidate and to evaluate their qualifications. Any questions, comments, or concerns before we go into executive session to perform this by the board? Yes, ma'am?
I do have a question. If, I guess, and I apologize if I've missed something, and I'm the only one that needs catching up here, but in terms of process after the fact, I realize that we're not making any decisions in the room. I got that, or I'm assuming, or whatever, we're, okay, right here, whatever. We're not making decisions in executive session, but the, so do we have a defined process for how we, what we will do when we come out of executive session?
We have not defined a process because this is an interim position.
Right.
So we left it open to discuss the candidates for vacant director's position. If we want to discuss it afterwards and somebody makes a motion, that is allowable because it is on the agenda. If we don't, that's fine, and we can move forward with a special meeting with further agenda. Should we discuss a better process afterwards, that is open to that.
Got it, thank you.
So I wanted to give us the latitude to do so, not knowing how tonight would go, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, so in executive session, it may be startlingly obvious to everybody that there's one person or two people, you know? And so we can talk about that, and then, although not making any decisions, but we can just talk about how we feel about each of the candidates, right? That's on the agenda, what we're doing.
We can talk about how they answered the questions and their qualifications. That's correct. If you notice, the one thing I will ask every commissioner to keep to themselves is I did put, if you choose to use it, scoring on the interview questions, 1, 2, 5, 5 being the high end, 1 being the low end. Please score appropriately, put a name at the top for the candidate. That way we know which one's which, all right? And if you want to hand those to me afterwards, I will collect collate and tabulate. Nothing else? We will stand in a quick five-minute recess until 6:25 PM. All right, we'll call the order, the meeting back to order at 6:29 PM on Wednesday, September the 12th. I need to read that 29 minutes later again. We are about to go into executive session once again to interview potential candidates for the vacant director's position. And we will do so until 8:45 PM. It is now 6:30 PM, and we will turn off the recorders and go into executive session. I don't know, I don't want that, I want that.
Someone in the building? Oh, Jason.
Hi.
No, there's nobody in the building.
It's a public meeting.
All right, we will call the meeting back to session at 8:47 PM. We're out of executive session now, and we are talking about candidates for the vacant director's position. Being said, we will now talk about the process going forward, or what we want to do next. Thoughts and comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we offer the position to Mr... Is it Corey or Coriel?
Rex Corey.
Rex Corey. It sounded like it was like an email address or something. Anyway, Mr. Corey. And then we'll discuss, could be discussed, the terms and stuff like that. Corey?
Coriel, yes. Okay, motion to offer the position to Mr. Rex Coriel. We have a second discussion.
I think I'm just trying to figure out what our process is. I think I was hoping that before we talked about names, we were talking a little bit about our process, but it's weird. And that's, and that's fine, because I think the two things, you know, there are a couple of things that, again, different from, and maybe it's not different, but from before, you know, from a standard hiring process are, you know, we don't, we haven't even established related pay necessarily. I have stuff that I've budgeted, but we, and if we have talked about it, or if the board has agreed on something, okay, sorry, then I missed it, and that's, I'm trying to not drag us down. But, but, you know, we certainly need to, that certainly, I would think, needs to be part of our discussion as well.
Yes.
You know, and so that's, I think the other thing that we have to account for, and maybe the motion already did that, is, okay, if he then, based on the terms that we give, and is not interested in the position, or is no longer interested for, but based on, you know, whatever he's learned, then it's kind of a, okay, what do we do then? And just, again, process-related. We know that, that's what I love. We know this, but anyway, so that's where I'm supportive of what you said, but I think there needs to be details to round it out.
Is there, is there somebody on the board that we would like to try to have negotiate that with them, or some committed to do that, or how do you get there? As far as negotiating an interim, part-time?
Well, I think that one of the things that Commissioner Singleton talked about is we need, we need a process going forward, and we haven't clearly defined that for an interim position. So we need to, some of the things we need to do is expectations from the board for that position. The hours we're going to expect from that position, and the compensation that are related to those hours within the budget that we can afford. So I think we need to have those things in place before we extend an offer.
Yes, we do need to know that, because the offer will include that.
So...
Can we figure that out tonight? Is somebody going to go home and think about it, and then make a suggestion to the rest of the board, and we meet next week to talk about it?
You're gone next week, right?
I am available by phone next week.
I feel ready to figure it out. I mean, there's not much left room within the budget. I mean, for $15, $15 an hour, 20 hours a week, or, I mean, we're somewhere in that ballpark, probably. I mean, I don't know if you had a larger number in mind.
I budgeted 25.
And that's what I thought.
25 for, and I probably don't have it with me, but a certain number, I can't remember.
I want to say it was 25 for 20?
It might have been, yeah.
So $25 an hour for 20 hours a week? I believe is what I remember.
Would you be okay with starting at 20 in case you wanted more?
I actually think if we're asking, I personally think if we're asking for professional-level work, then I think, so, because I think what you have to realize is that, okay, so 25 an hour app for 40 hours a week is $1,000 a week. That's $52,000 a year with no other compensation. That's actually on par with what Chino made, so I'm just, you know, just use that as a reference point. And so I personally feel like, because then the other part of it is, is we're saying, hey, this is only a part-time job. To some people, that's going to be desirable. To other people, it's not necessarily, that's kind of where I came up with, if there might even be a tiny bit of a, we'll call it a premium because there's nothing else in there, but that's, that's how I looked at it. And I, you know, I'm certainly, I think, I think 20 might be a little bit too low, given that we were actually paying a maintenance person $22 an hour.
Yeah. I'm positive it was 25 for 20.
Yes.
Now that I think about it, it's 25 for 20.
Yeah, that number seems taller, it is a little bit of a mayhem.
And that, I mean, that's what's in our, that's what's in our plan stuff. I'm not saying that the plan is perfect, but that's kind of, that's what I went with. Certainly, we would hope that any professional who believes that the job can't be done in that number of hours is going to come to us and say so, you know, and talk about how, what needs to be done differently. And obviously, we wouldn't know that until after the person starts, but, but yeah. And then the expectations, that's a slightly tougher one, because I think, sorry, I'm just trying to figure out.
And when would we want them to start?
I think I would personally say that, personally, I would say that's negotiable.
Yes.
As soon as possible is awesome.
Yeah, negotiable.
Yeah, you know, that part I'd be comfortable with, whatever.
Negotiable, but as soon as possible. Not like, you can't start until after the levy, so it's not, not what we're going to say.
Two weeks? Shall we shoot for within two weeks?
No, just say, I agree that it's negotiable, because they might not be ready to start.
Right, when can you start?
And I think that 25 is a good offer. I mean, less than that, I think, is not, because, I mean, we're asking someone to do a lot that's worth more than $25 an hour. We just don't have it.
Agreed, definitely.
Yes.
I think when we make the offer, it's important to say that we would like to pay you more, you know, with our budget constraints, we cannot. You know?
I'm looking at my schedule, excuse me.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
So in terms of the expectations, if someone, whether it's me, whether it's you, whether it's someone else, can come up with a list of expectations and distribute that to everyone. If we could even just meet long enough to, like, if you have, you know, if you have feedback, I mean, I can send out what I think. I mean, I'm, if you'd prefer to do it.
No, it's fine.
Okay, I can send out what I think, and if anybody has feedbacks, then individually say, what about this, what about that? Because I have no aspirations of my list being perfect or final, but, you know, part of it is that whatever the list is, is that we all agree that that's what that person should be doing, or what those expectations are. I can send something out, I'll send it out by tomorrow at noon, right? And then if you, okay, so tomorrow's Thursday, if everybody can look at their email, and by Friday at noon, get back to me. When are you leaving town?
Friday evening.
Friday what?
Friday evening.
Oh, well, that's down. Rex. Sorry.
Thank my appointment.
Okay, well, no. Could not be quite all, is that, I mean, instead of, no, not, you can't leave then. No, and, and so I think what I'm trying to do is say, hey, if people have feedback, which is great, I'll incorporate the feedback, and then we can try to come together, but we got to figure out when that is. Come together with, hopefully, a finished product and say, yes, we're good, can we make the offer?
Once again, we can do a meeting that I can phone in on.
Okay.
So that's okay. So...
When is the time for everybody else? And we could still meet, like, Friday and make these, although, no, you won't be available because you'll be driving.
And actually, I'll be flying. But yes, it doesn't matter. I have no, if, I have full confidence in the remaining members of the board that I don't need to be there for the vote if I can pass on my expectations.
And so does it make sense to potentially amend the current, and maybe it doesn't need amending, but, but it's kind of a, hey, that your motion would be that we extend the offer once these things are established?
Yes, we would amend that, yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense? Yes.
It almost seems like, it almost seems like we have everything in place to...
Except for the expectations.
Except for the expectations. Could that come, I was just wondering if that could have come before he started, possibly?
Okay, let me amend my, um, motions. I have to think about how I worded it.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That maybe the amendment include with what we talked about as far as wages and hours, with expectations to be set prior to a start date.
Okay, so I am going to amend my motion. I move that we extend to Mr. Rex Coriel the position of assistant interim director at $25 per hour for 20 hours per week. Starting will be negotiable, but as soon as possible, and the list of expectations will be given to him later, or when he's offered the position.
Or prior to the start date?
Prior to the start date.
Prior to the start date?
Yes.
So do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Further discussion on the amended motion?
This, this allows you or someone, whoever's appointed to contact him and extend that offer, right?
That's correct. Any further discussion?
Actually, yeah. I just, I hope that we will not reach out to, sorry, I'm just going to say this, not reach out to the other candidates until we have an accept or reject, such that we, and that we do so respectfully, I mean, obviously, we do so once we, if we are able to obtain an agreement, you know? But just part of saying, you know, that if he decided that he is not interested, that we still have opportunities to readdress the candidates.
Agreed.
I agree, and I think even, even though we're in an open public meeting, there's nobody here, and given that, I don't think there's a reason to rush and post the audio until it's done.
We will withhold the audio posting until we're finished notifying all candidates, at least contacting...
Unless it's requested by someone.
Unless it's requested.
Yeah, I mean, that is the smart, you know, I think if somebody, well, it's public record, but, yeah, I just, you know, I think that...
Yes.
In the past, we've been really quick to, to say, you know, oh, thanks, or, you know, however, I mean, whatever, but, but in this case, it's like, no, I think, you know, we had, we had candidates that we, we have candidates we like for very different reasons.
All three sides, yes.
And I think that, you know, that until, until we have a final, until something's finalized, then everything's stone-like.
They're all good candidates.
Exactly.
And when we extend this offer of employment, are we going to extend it in writing or just verbally?
So since we're still in discussion, I would say, as part of the way I would extend the offer as the chair, I would do it in writing, through an email to him, and wait for a reply, and then, part of that reply, if it's positive or negative, I would then say, if it's positive, I would then say, the expectations will be given prior to a start date to be established with.
See, I actually disagree. Only, like, that's all fine, and I think those things are expected to happen, I just give a guy a call, you know, and say, hey, here's what we want to do, and then I'll follow it up with a formal offer, you know, blah, 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 blah. But, but I think, I think the thing is, is that's where I think sometimes we have to remember not to be, like, we need to follow rules, absolutely, but I think we need to remember to be human.
Yes.
And, and would, how would you feel if we are delighted to extend it off to you, and like, could they just not have called me and said, hey, we're delighted, you know, to extend this offer to you? I'd rather receive that phone call, as much as I don't even like talking on the phone.
I love the fact that you have those great suggestions. I think it's wonderful that you think I would use the word delighted.
Well, you should. Maybe you should.
Marry me.
All right, on a serious note, we will make a phone call with an email to follow, which will cover the expectations to be handled either by the vice chair or by Commissioner Singleton, since you're gathering them all.
Yeah, either way, I mean, we'll, I'll get them together, like I said, I'll send out by tomorrow at noon, and here's what I'd really love is by, is, with the exception of you, if everybody could get back to me by the weekend, it would just be, it would just be super helpful.
I'll get back to you.
So meaning, look out for it, okay?
Okay, and so...
Go in play.
Yep.
That's what I did.
Sean's question. When do we want to get together and talk about that list of expectations? Next week? When's our scheduled meeting? I can't remember.
The 20...
It's two weeks, right?
The 20...
Two weeks and a day?
Yeah, the 27th, it's on my, yeah.
Is that, you know?
I guess it would depend on what, if he accepts, it'd depend on what a start date is.
Yeah, don't we? I think we sort of need to meet next week to hammer, agree, and it should be one of those really lovely short meetings that's like, yes, we agree here. And then, so does that...
It's fine.
Does anyone have, next week, besides you, Mr. Chair, does anyone else have a bad night? And I'm sorry, I'm taking over, but it's just my...
I have no problem with that.
My captain coming on.
Was he going to say anything?
Oh, Captain, my Captain.
I don't have a bad night next week.
I don't know if I do, but I don't think so. I'd rather just do, the earlier, the better, I would say.
Monday?
I think that's fine. I'm going to just pretend like it is.
Monday's good.
17th.
Monday?
Monday it is. So Monday, you need to meet and talk about expectations. Should be accepted.
At 6 o'clock, 6:30?
Are we having a levy committee meeting here or no? Was the one scheduled or no? Sorry, I just...
Well, we semi-scheduled for here, but I said I would be letting people know via email.
Well, we can't have one if this place is not open. We cannot have one here.
No, we can't.
I am not sure how many more times I need to say that, but we...
Okay, so I think that we need to just cancel that meeting for next, because we left it kind of tentative.
Right, yeah, we, we cannot, if this facility is not open for other activities, it is illegal for us to hold a, I mean, just to be very clear, for us to hold a levy committee meeting here.
Okay, well, see, I didn't understand, because, it's because the pool is, building is closed to public use.
Absolutely.
And that's why you can't.
If no other group can have a meeting here, we cannot have a meeting here. Yes.
Okay, so I think we should just cancel that levy meeting.
I think it's... I, I think it's, I think picking it back up on the 24th, anyway, sorry, I know we're diverting, but, but it's, it would have been at the same time, that's why.
Okay.
Okay, so Monday at 6:00 or 6:30?
6:00 is fine.
6:00 is fine.
Are you going to put that agenda in order?
Will you get that agenda cut?
Yeah.
Thank you. You'll have to chair the meeting.
What's the words for, I mean, we're just, we're, we're expected to set expectations, I guess.
Interim directors' expectations. And do we need to put anything else on the agenda?
Not that, no.
Okay, I can't think of anything else.
All right, so any further discussion on the motion on the floor? No further discussion on the motion on this floor, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, meeting's adjourned at 9:06. Orders 1106 for Liz Weston.